Five oh one P to call to order the September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen Ed Ops Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. First on the agenda, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Tom.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public and student comment. Oh, sorry. No, no one. No? Okay, so nobody has signed up to speak. All right, so we're moving right on then to Amy with the Whole Child, Whole Wassa Short Cycle Report.
Thank you. Before I start, I just want the board to know that when the strategic planning process began and we talked about having a service strand, when we met with the individual groups, we had to set the stage for what service meant. What is service and what is customer service? So, really what we're all after is just the most positive customer experience possible. So with service, we want to be able to treat each other and the people we interact with internally, externally with care, total with care, attentiveness, and to get results. I will say that I was very pleased that we began this work in January and then in March there is a national study began about measuring customer experience. It's something we know that does impact student achievement. We know it drives community engagement and it's good for all of our students and improves customer service. I was asked to participate along with about five hundred other school leaders from across the nation. The study is the first of its kind and it is supported by the National School Public Relations Association as well as the National School Board Association. So I have had a few sneak peeks at what the report will be. However, the report will be released now in a few more weeks. But it was just exciting to know that we embarked upon something and now there's getting attention nationally around this great topic. So, right. So the first goal was centered around marketing, but we know our preferred state is going to be to promote a culture of excellent service. So that'll be first and foremost on every one of the three goals. So for marketing, we want to increase awareness and positive perceptions of the district as measured by an annual increase of five percent in Facebook fans and followers, and an annual increase of five percent in positive media stories. So what is going well for us now? We have seen increases in both our fans and followers on Facebook. With Facebook algorithms, it's really more important to have fans versus followers, but the trend we're on, we are capturing more followers to become fans. To be sure that we capture as much as possible, every day I go in and I will invite anybody who has interacted with the district, invite them to like our page and to follow us. We also have had, enjoyed, high post engagement on our Facebook posts. And I gave two stats here for weekly reach. So from January through June, those numbers are quite high for reach, but full disclosure, we had eight inclement weather days. We don't want to repeat that for this school year, but that really drove a lot of engagement. And especially when we were closed on a Monday, we could post on Sunday and people were following and that really helped us a lot. So just, just full disclosure with that aspect of it. We tried to strive for at least ten thousand a week and it'd be great to increase that. And you can see we did during those particular months. We've also seen an increase in our student enrollment for both 4K and Wave. And just as a reminder, Wave services grades six through twelve in an online virtual environment. So what is our current status? Last year, we had one hundred and fifty-one positive stories in the media, and I'm talking local media at this point. We had seventy neutral and thirty-three negative. When this presentation was put together last week, finally, the final numbers were twenty-six this year now for positive stories.
Can we, Amy, just a question? I'm sorry, do you want, do you want questions as you go or at the end?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. As far as thirty-three negative, well, I mean, I follow the page, I like it, I share it. What, I don't really recall seeing a lot of negative. Is this like school closing negative or, I mean, do you have an example of what the negative stories are?
Yes. So this is, this is the media environment. This is broadcast, so this will be print, so this is TV, newspapers, and our online version with Wassa Pilot and Review. And their focus is more on the local, which we appreciate, and they will share what we give them. It's been really wonderful. So that is that statistic.
Oh yeah, sorry, I missed that.
This doesn't include social media.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Amy, one other comment, I guess. I would suggest from a measurement standpoint, I think that that's one way to do it in terms of the five percent increase in positive media stories. But when you talk about service and, and customer service, right, there's a methodology out now that's called Net Promoter Score, and it's a process by which you simply ask somebody, in fact, I'm sure you guys have seen this from airlines, from cable companies, from all kinds of service providers, they simply ask you, would you recommend our company, in this case would be our district, to a friend or family member looking for a, a district for their child or something like that? And they rate it one to ten. It's very easy to measure and if they rate it, you know, below a certain amount, then they can, you know, leave a comment, or they can leave a comment regardless. But it's, it's very, very simple and it gives you a great indication on where we are overall. So I, is that something that you guys can look into or implement?
You will see, you'll see more of that coming up here in goals as well with what you're talking about, Pat.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And just know that I also have an eye toward the optimization of resources as well. So we're trying to be efficient and use our resources, you know, as best we can. So, yes, you'll, you'll hear more when we get to survey part of it too. So what you just said, Pat, is something we talked about when we met with the two evenings at Wassa West with strategic planning is experience. We are one provider of public education, we're not the only one. People can go anywhere they want. We want to be the best we can be. We want to deliver the absolute best customer service so people stay. So that's what sets us apart and that's what we really want to utilize. But we also know that just going to, you're hungry, okay? We've got how many choices of fast food establishments around? Do you go because of the food or do you go because of the way you're treated? Some people, you want to go where you feel good and where you're treated well. So I, I hear what you are saying and that is something we're going to be looking at in the baseline measure with a quick feedback survey when it comes to experiencing programs and events also, that'll be forthcoming. But thank you for that. Yes, that's something we will be looking into. So Wave, you know, our fairly new program here in the district, and it's now open to the state, it's a charter school. So what was encouraging is that forty-four percent of those who enrolled in Wave heard about us through our staff and schools, which means our, our own employees are talking and being positive ambassadors for programs that we currently offer. And we have, we know this for a fact, we have a field right in our online application that asks, it's a required field, how did you learn about this program? And we've collected that data. We also have the same thing with 4K. At one time, Wassa School District was the only game in town with 4K and that's no longer the case. 4K has an online enrollment component and it has for a few years. We now have a required field, we want to know, how do people find out? And though the seventy-one percent are those that already have a relationship with the district, they, they went to this, they were former students themselves, or they, they know that they are taxpayers in our school district, so residents. So that band makes up the seventy-one percent, but that's encouraging. We also have many other touch points when it comes to marketing and advertising for those two programs. And it's, it's encouraging to know that the many touch points we have, there's at least one to a few who cite the locations and the way we do things. So that's very encouraging. Challenges being encountered? Right now, our K-12 enrollment process is not fully online. That is something we definitely will be looking into. So right now, there is a spot on, on the enrollment application process that asks that same question, how did you learn about the Wassa School District? What have you heard about us? Not everybody fills that out. So that data isn't as rich as the other two programs in which we can export that data right away. And some stories that are pitched to the media aren't covered and that's just, that's just life. I mean, resources, illness, something else comes and they're planning to cover our event but then they're pulled. But it's just more of an awareness for you that we do pitch stories to the media. What are the, our next steps? Third Friday was this past Friday and it'll take several weeks to compile all the data. So we have final numbers for student demographics and I'll, I'll be looking at the enrollment trends and seeing where we can leverage more of our advertising and marketing areas and then expand those. We are also going to be looking at a new or a different survey for both parents and staff, but also students. That's a component that we are missing. If we're looking for the true customer experience, we don't hear from our students. So we are going to be exploring that option as well. And we want to measure their engagement and their perceptions of the district as well and their education.
Amy, why didn't we stop the surveys that we were doing with school perceptions?
We, we stopped just for the one year because of all of the feedback sessions that Dr. Hiltz was having across our community and in our schools. And there were many surveys that he did internally as well. And quite frankly, the, the data doesn't give us, it wasn't as helpful as it could be. And I think I heard some of that from the board also. It didn't really give us everything we wanted. We want to look at something now that'll be even more robust than that can, that can truly measure what we want to know. And that's even getting back to some open-ended questions. Otherwise, we're left to infer and it's...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't go down that same path again where I thought we knew what we wanted to go after, but the implementation of that last survey, I think it got away from the original intent and it got to the point where, as you're saying, right, it became so general. But then I also heard that while the data was available, it just couldn't be shared with certain groups or it wasn't going to be made available in, at a school level or whatever it is. I, I hope we're thinking beyond that now and really focusing on exactly what you have in front of us, which is a true perception, good, bad, or indifferent, on what's going on with the school, with the district, with a certain employee group, with the board, what have you. I, I think that was a huge opportunity that we missed in those last surveys.
And those surveys were board-approved and they were the same surveys for a few years. I mean, we didn't change anything but a couple of questions.
No.
But I still, I think after going through it, we realized we need, we need more. We need more and better information.
At the time, we were told that administration found them useful to use internally, but what made it to the board was pretty useless, which is why I complained every year about them. And we finally got rid of them for other reasons.
Yeah.
But you're right, we don't want to go with something like that again, at least from our side of it. Maybe you all found something valuable in them, but we never knew what that was.
There seemed to be a fear of actually looking at individual data at a school level or something because they didn't want it to be perceived as...
Well, you couldn't share personnel information.
Sure.
Which it never had to be shared.
Sure.
It could have been sequestered.
Right. I know, I just, I, I hope that we're more advanced in our thinking than we were the previous time we implemented.
So that'll be forthcoming. And that's why we stopped just with, with all of the other surveys and face-to-face that we had at buildings and with the community. Just give that a rest. So then we'll develop a baseline measure. And we also have a couple other surveys going on, as you know, through In The Know and Dr. Hiltz communicated with you about Nexus Solutions. So there will be some perception data with the community as well as with our own staff. So the next goal is programs and offerings. And we are looking at increasing awareness of district programs and offerings and optimize experiences for students, families, staff, and the community as measured by a brief feedback tool with a baseline determined by June of two thousand and twenty. So this particular goal is also two-pronged really, because we're looking at increasing awareness, which can go back to the marketing and advertising, but we also want to focus on the experience because it's the experience that's going to matter. It's going to matter in attitudes and actions and our words. And Pat, this is, this is that brief feedback tool concept that you just mentioned with the previous goal. We are looking at having something that'll give us quick feedback following an event or a program. And it could be looking, having a QR code or paper, whatever's going to work for the person who's experiencing something. So for example, if somebody goes to a public program at the Planetarium, we want to know, how was it for you? Looking at environmental, you know, temperature, just, just things around. What, what would have increased their experience? What would have made it better? What did you think of the quality of the program? What could we do to improve? Things of that nature, but very quick and immediate because we want to catch them as they're exiting. Just as an example, using Planetarium. What is going well? We in this district seriously have just an awesome array of programs that we offer students. We just, we never give up on students and we try to offer as many opportunities as possible. A positive experience that we've had is having a consistent branded student enrollment process across our schools. So we have held a series of meetings over the last year and a half where we bring in the frontline employees of all of our schools. What can we do to make it better for the new families coming in? Having everything consistent, we've had, the communications department went through and we branded everything. We worked with the frontline staff. We went through the enrollment process, asking the questions we want to ask, making sure we're capturing everything that, that we need and want to report back to the state as well. It's been, it's been great. And the packets of everything enrollment is handled here and we ship it out from central office to the schools. So any, any family, any, any new family, if they have three children and they happen to be at Wassa West and, but they have two in elementary, they can leave with packets. They, they can have questions answered and then return information. And we have been continually fine-tuning that process and it's been going very, very well. We received positive feedback from families as well as the schools. So that's a process we've continued through summer. Anybody coming into any of our schools during summer learning, even if they weren't planning to attend that school, can leave with information.
What is the status of online enrollment?
That is what we are working toward with. That's the next stage. We've been leveraging a bit more of what our student management system can provide for us as far as transportation, but we absolutely need to get to online enrollment.
Has that been part of the last eighteen-month work effort?
Talking about that, yes, absolutely. We have, sure, go ahead, John.
So online enrollment is something that Infinite Campus has been continuing to develop and it's something that we'll be reaching out and taking a webinar on, an overview of the tool and getting a quote. It'll be an additional service, so service to families and its ability to serve their needs as well as ours and costs will all be factors into it.
But that enrollment app can sit outside of Infinite Campus?
If we wanted to choose another vendor...
I mean, if they're developing right now?
I shouldn't, they're not in development. They have an online platform. They're constantly upgrading their entire piece.
Okay, sure.
If we were going to do online enrollment, you're right, there are lots of different companies we could go to, but it would always have to come back to being put into Infinite Campus. So Infinite Campus right now would be our provider of choice. So it's a matter of vetting that tool, finding the appropriate measures and bringing everybody online.
Is that on, like, is that actively being worked? Is there like a target date that will be online enrollment ready by next school?
I don't know if we set an official date. In my plans, we would have it vetted and ready to have made a decision for implementation, possible implementation next year.
Okay, thank you.
And Amy, remember a couple years ago when I went to the State Wisconsin Convention, they said that, you know, let's take an example of a basketball game and, and at Wassa West and there's a TV monitor up and people are waiting to get in. It's a great five-minute reel of, do you know that the district offers this, 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 and this? Because there are so many parents, they're not aware of what we have. And it just said, same with like parent-teacher conference, some kind of little video that goes for five minutes that, do you know this, this, and this? And, and I, I see that when I was at the law game on Friday, the way they're using the scoreboards, they're featuring kids, and of course, it all has to do with sports and, and thanking the people that are contributing. But I still don't think we do enough marketing experience with that video idea when you've got a captured audience. They can't go anywhere, they're waiting to get in. Same for the pop concert or a music event, that there's something reeling that they say, oh, I didn't know that my child could be enrolling in that, or I didn't know that was an option because I would say that fifty percent of the parents are not as informed as all of us because we live and breathe it, but they don't. They've got too many things going on. So I still think that's a really good idea, that we, we have little videos rolling about what we offer.
And I, I think it's a, that's a great idea and anywhere you can do that. Maybe it's at the middle school, maybe it's on our Facebook page. You know, we talk about marketing and I think, you know, I want to think of it like a business, but we think about where our competitors are. So we need to make sure people know what we offer that local private schools don't offer. They need to know what, look at this vast array of classes that you just aren't going to get from this other school. And what do we offer with our online programming that, you know, the rural virtual academy that I hear on the radio all the time doesn't offer? What do we offer that they don't? And so I agree whether it's on Facebook or at athletic events or, you know, in the middle schools because you've got eighth graders that are parents that are thinking about which school their child's going to go to, they need to know, you know, what can they do at our high schools that they wouldn't be able to do if they went to Wassa Newman or DC Everest or whatever it might be.
Well, look at, look at EGL before, during, and after the marketing campaign that wrapped into run. Gone.
Yeah, makes a huge difference.
Absolutely.
So what is our current status? There have been great conversations and creative thinking around optimizing experiences for families. So a couple examples I will give for Horseman. Horseman is very pro-family engagement and they're looking at their population saying, what can we do to even bring more service to our families? So for example, this, this past summer, they had a free rummage sale and they, they opened it up for the school, they took donations, families came in, but they also provided a meal and they also had community resources present. So if a family needed to hear about budgeting, they had somebody there from a community organization and they, they just wrapped around a lot of services with these families. Horseman Connections, they're having very specific evenings of topics and they're having their first one and they're bringing in more parents. So when it comes time to parent-teacher conference, they're hoping for increased attendance. But they're doing a lot as a school to try to just engage the parents so they, they stay with us. A lot of times, elementary school, parents are, are there all the time, but then when you start getting into secondary, it kind of slips off. And Rob Phelps, Dr. Phelps, just presented last week at the Fall Superintendent's Conference with a breakout session on family engagement and all the good things that their school is doing and what we do and provide here as a Wassa School District. And he, he really had a fabulous experience. He wanted to share that.
So Amy, that, that sounds phenomenal. This is the first I've heard about that. Maybe Andrea could answer if you don't know the answer to this, but has Dr. Phelps done this presentation for the principals in our district?
He, he has been.
Are they aware of it? I mean, this is a great thing that they're doing, but are, are, are other schools aware? They could probably learn a lot about it from Dr. Phelps.
Sure they could. He just returned. It, it, the conference just was and we were communicating over the weekend about that.
Thanks, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. So Andrea, is that something that Dr. Phelps would be able to share with the other principals?
Of course, and would go, obviously it's embedded within our strategic planning process. And we'll say, when we were together as an administrative team in August of this year for our retreat and kickoff, the Horseman team, if I'm correct, I looked at my colleagues here, when we had some sharing out around the room, they started to highlight some of the things and I know they spoke in depth about their rummage sale because that had happened in July. I don't know that they had forecasted Dr. Phelps' presentation and maybe they weren't aware at that time, but certainly that's opportunities for us to share and we're together every month, so...
Right, right. And then, and then I know time is limited, so even if it's not a full presentation, I'm sure a presentation is an hour or more, but if there's still a way that principals, when they, when you meet monthly, are they sharing these ideas?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And another example would be Gifted and Talented Program, quarterly programs for high-achieving students. And they just held their first one and that was positive. That was just last week. We are also are holding our summer learning debrief this week, so we'll be looking again at continuous improvement. What can we do to make that summer learning experience the best it can be for, for the children and their families? Challenges that we're encountering, and that goes back to Pat's comment too, about leveraging systems to increase efficiencies and optimize end-user experience. And one would be the online student enrollment and the other would, that we're working on is the rental and facility calendar for consistency and greater organization and Next steps, based on the information from the student demographic report, we are going to revamp the district brochure. And by the way, that information's going to be coming to you one month at the October Ed Ops Committee. We are asking the schools to collect the parent-teacher conference participation data and that will determine if this is something we want to utilize going forward, that being the common afternoon time. We're doing that this year, this school year, as well as the following school year, and that data will help inform if that's an opportunity we want to move forward with. And then we'll develop that brief feedback tool following the events and the programs. And we also want to gauge their treatment. How, how, how were our staff? How did they show up? Did you, did you feel like you were important? Was it, was it everything you wanted and more? We want to have a few open-ended questions as well because maybe some other trends would emerge. And then revamping the website.
Amy, what specifically are you hoping to do with the new website?
Website, I, to be responsive. Right now, it's not responsive, it needs to be responsive and it needs to, I want the greater accessibility with it. It, it, it needs, it's, it's just time for a refresh. It's about, it's been about seven years and we definitely want to do that. And the final goal is partnerships. And we want to attract and strengthen partnerships and optimize their mutual value as measured by quantitative and qualitative feedback at the conclusion of the partnership or at least on an annual basis. One thing we talked a lot about is, a partnership, sometimes people think it's one way, like the district is asking or the district seeks this. When someone provides an income back to us, we, we want to really make it strong. We want it to be beneficial to both parties. So what is going well is we have so many partnerships in this district and very good partnerships and just looking at our career and technical education department for And just looking at our career and technical education department for one, I mean, that's just, there are so many and it's very positive and providing youth apprenticeship opportunities. And the other one is I continue to receive from the community questions on what can we do, we as an organization or a business, to support or to adopt a school? So what is our current status? We do have new partnerships forming to support students and families. And one is for like school pantries. Almost everybody now has a need for personal care products. And also school supplies and some are even household supplies. So we had a business that donated to the district. They heard there were needs, what do you need, school district? And gave them ideas for personal care products. That particular business donated two different times to the district last year. And those donation requests were approved by the board. Well, someone who was involved in that business took the same idea and went back to her church. Well, you'll see now coming up, there's going to be a donation that you will be asked to approve. But just from one person working in a business, helping out that way and then took it somewhere else and the impact was just quite phenomenal for our high schools. And that's where these donations went. And another good one is when the board was looking to secure a new superintendent. And we had focus groups, we asked people to come in and what are the characteristics you're looking for in a new leader of the school district? One of the groups was clergy. We wanted a representative from clergy. So this was when you were looking for Dr. Hiltz. And this particular pastor has stayed in contact with the district and it's a partnership. Their church offers like community movie nights. So it's helping us, we're helping them. But also the giving, just out of kindness, they want to give back. And this particular church is continuing to do little drives for us with the care products and school supplies and now even as far as clothing. And that was just as of a couple of weeks ago with the clothing component. But just it's, people are very caring, very nice. We had one business now, I'm waiting for a check to come in, but it was corporate giving. They helped with youth apprenticeships, but they wanted to do something more. And they held a local drive and then put it into a competition with some of their other branch outlets. And we'll be receiving a sizable check for some other supplies for students.
Amy, do we have, I know I've asked this a number of times over the years and I honestly can't remember. Do we have a consistent process through which we recognize these partnerships?
Donations or the partnerships themselves?
Either, both?
Through the donations that come through monthly to the board. And then through our friends of education, who will recognize partnerships that way.
But do we send anything out? Like do we do any kind of release? Do we send Shereen at Wausau Pilot, hey, you know what? Here's a list of eight businesses, get their approval of course, that donated to the district in September. Because what you just said is what I've always talked about. It gets other people thinking, but looking at those in a board packet, and we always do acknowledge it or someone acknowledges it, to me, that's really just a sign of nothing from a recognition standpoint.
Well, we can, yes, we can beat that up more.
So how do we get something in place? Because like I said, I know I've brought this up half a dozen times over the years. What does it take to actually get that in place to say, here's what we do to recognize partners? Whatever it is, whatever you want to call it.
And I know some, depending on the school, they will do something special. Like they will have like Rib Mountain School. They had, they brought in all their partners and had banners all across the gym and had a celebration. So schools will handle that on an individual basis.
Well, Amy, example of Jim Nick and all of the work he does for us. And of course, he's been recognized at the November.
Friends of the.
Yes, friends of, yeah. But do people in the public know what he and his group does?
Yes, and Channel Seven had had a whole segment on him this summer and what he does. And the Chatterbox Charities that goes with it, yes, yes, there was a big segment on.
But he's, what Pat is bringing up is he's just one person. And there's lots and lots of other people that do great things like he, but they don't get that public recognition.
Right, people need to know if you go to Wild Wings and say your team M, 10% of your meal goes to Wausau West. Or you go to the gas pump over here, the east pump, and you get that. I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities. And I just think that we're really missing, and maybe I'm the only one, I'm not a marketing expert, but it seems like we are undercutting ourselves by not advocating for that.
Even the Facebook page, I mean, you could have a monthly after the monthly meeting and we approve the donations of thank you to those monthly donations would be something.
That would be a start.
I don't know if the board recognized last month that I did actually orally state all of the donations for the first time. And that was because in my observation of other board meetings, seeing how they approach donations. So I had talked to Dr. Hiltz about that, but wanted to do that going forward after we approved the donations, saying the thank you to each and everyone, but I don't think it goes far enough.
I think Facebook would be a good idea. I think Twitter would be a good idea to send out an announcement. But something like, something online like Wausau Pilot might also, if they'd be willing monthly to recognize, you know, they probably won't have a minimum, they probably don't want to run a list of every, you know, $20 donation. But if they maybe have a minimum, they say they, you know, if you get over this amount, we'll recognize it every month. I mean, it's a thank you to the business that or person that donated. And like you said, it's, it also might alert other people that, hey, you just got recognized.
It's a win-win for everyone.
Right, maybe somebody else sees it.
And they might even do it without a minimum. I mean, $20 to one person or organization could be a lot more than $1,000 to another organization.
A monthly or a quarterly press release and sharing all the giving that's going on and how valuable it is.
Amy, thanks for putting this all together because I think what I'm hearing from the board being new here is that there's a lot of conduits here that obviously aren't being filled. And the fact that you're doing a lot, the schools are doing a lot, but we may not know all of that. And I had a multitude of questions, obviously. When I looked at your presentation, you know, like the rural virtual academy's been around for 10 years. You know, for us to compete with them, I was wondering what are we doing? You know, and those are questions I can ask personally and get caught up to speed. And I don't want to bore us here. But you know, there are so many things. The high schools, they have their video programs, they have their cameras, they have their streaming capabilities. We all have that now. Maybe you're talking about videos. You know, you can put a two-minute video together and that's an assignment for students. Wausau West could be doing that for the board and for the district and getting that out to all the different places. Let the students be a part of that. That would be my suggestion because there's a lot for you to do. You can't put these videos together, but the schools can. Middle schools have video programs, the elementary schools, I'm out at Rib Mountain and talking with them and Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson, and they all have their video cameras. And students are learning how to deal with, you know, how to create and edit when they're in third grade. You know, I think if we started putting those things, when you take a look at what we have in the stadium and the schools, those video clips could be rolling all the time. That's just easy stuff that could be done. But I would like to see more of the students involved with doing this. Because we could be streaming the games, we could be streaming all the activities. We archive them, but we could be streaming them at the same time. If I can't make, I would have loved to have seen the log game because I was down in Missouri at the time. I would have loved to have been there. Obviously, I've had a lot to do with the log game throughout the years and that, and I missed it. And I was searching to see if I could see a streamed game and we don't have that. And I think that if those video programs are going to be academically oriented as well and we're starting to get people into the news media, if we want to start looking at that, we need to give them the recognition as they are in school. So I would suggest that we encourage that and get those people to help you to push it out there and hit every place possible. Because we've, you know, the virtual program's been, like I said, around for 10 years. Now we're trying to compete with them. What are we, what's the percentage? What I want to know, what's the percentage of students from outside of our district that are coming to our district virtually? In which obviously that becomes, Bob, something that comes into your ballgame when it comes to the financial aspect, that becomes a great way to increase our enrollment without them having to be in our brick and mortar. You know, a lot of questions about those. Surely I go too far. I have a lot of questions.
So I do want to just point out, you have the school pantries listed as new partnerships. I attended a PTO meeting last week and I was disappointed to learn that their no thank you table at this particular school had to be shut down due to the health department coming in and saying that the milk had to be stored in an industrial fridge. And there were a couple of things that the school didn't have. So if there are some new partnerships to help maintain those, that would be ideal to find. It was just disappointing to hear because it has a lot of impacts. I mean, in snack time, the students, they can go down there and get a milk. If they don't have a milk card, then that milk also ends up getting donated at the Salvation Army. I know when I was a volunteer, I would go over there and see, hey, it was really being used. So to see that this had to be shut down was very disappointing. But maybe there's a potential partnership that could help get an industrial fridge into the schools that don't have them.
That really fits with what we were saying. If we recognize the ones that are good partnerships and then say, we're looking for partnerships in these areas, that puts the appeal out and hopefully we can get some people to come in and join in on those partnerships.
So strengthened partnerships that we have are blessings in a backpack. They are now at all of our elementary schools except one because the one school wanted to continue the partnership that they had with another entity. We're also looking to continue the development of the aviation coursework with the Wausau Flying Service. And that will just go to meet a need. There's a worker shortage in pilots. And also exploring a partnership right now with Boardcade and CTE with consumer and Family and Consumer Science for graduates to leave with a childcare certification so they are ready to work as a lead teacher in a childcare role. What challenges are being encountered? Being able to assess and the value, viability of partnerships, opportunities. It's vetting partnerships. Sometimes we receive requests, but it's more, it's one-sided and not exactly a benefit for the school district. The very things you were talking about too is just the sheer management of partnerships. What are the next steps? To develop a rubric to rate the success and satisfaction of the partnerships, including suggestions and feedback. And collecting the number of attendees that we have at clubs and events. And this is something the secondary schools will be gathering. Looking at our billboards, we're seeking advertisements. And if we have data that'll show that 30,000 people come through just in one month or this particular quarter, that'll help, I mean, that gives them trust that we are, their business is being seen by how many people. And that also translates to the programs. Because most times when you attend an event, you end up with a program that has the advertising in it, which then goes to the yearbooks as well. So that's just another piece of data so we know how many are really coming in. Won't be an exact science, but at least it's a general idea. And student staff go in. And we also have the silver card holders. And that is something that the Board of Education has been giving as a gift for retirees. They're given their silver card, which is a lifetime pass, as well as the gold card users or holders 60 years and older. If you reside within the Wausau School District boundaries, you can attend any event for free. It's a lifetime pass. Yeah, that concludes it.
Thanks, Amy.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You've been bothering her through the whole thing.
She said, no, we've been bothering her through the whole thing, so that's why there aren't any more.
I do have a question, I'm just curious. So with Facebook, it seems like you have those perfectly timed. Are you able to set that up in advance or are you? Oh, okay, good. I was thinking, I hope Amy's not doing this on the weekend. Well, thank you very much, Amy. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, school forest building update. Okay, Mr. Maney is here to provide an update to us.
I'd like to stand over here.
Sure, wherever you're comfortable.
Comfortable everywhere.
Perfect.
The attire probably tells you I climbed off the rappel and walked and came on in here. Another wonderful day talking about awesome programs that the district has, which maybe some other surrounding districts don't have. The school forest is one of those. But I'm glad to come in tonight and share a little bit with you about the building project that we've been discussing for several years now. We've gotten to the point where we've got a pretty good set of plans put together. And we're actually going out and starting to talk informally with some people from some major foundations around town. In the next two to six weeks, we'll actually be talking to five big foundations and showing them what it is that we're looking at building out there and asking them for some pretty substantial financial backing for that. And in those initial conversations, one thing that came up more than once was, we started calling this project the New Lodge Project. And I think that happened because it was replacing the building which was commonly referred to as the Old Lodge. So it just kind of was a way of communicating to people that it was going to take the place of that. As time has gone on, we've heard from several of these prospective donors and people in the community that in their mind, a lodge is a place that people go to vacation or they go there to sleep. Or it's affiliated with social events like a ski lodge. And that really isn't the purpose of this new building that we are talking about building. So Paula Clutter, our director of the Wausau School Foundation, said to me, well, if we're not going to call it the New Lodge, Jerry, what would you call it? And after some jokes about the Maney manner and so forth, I said, actually, I think we should describe what it is that the building will do for the community. And I proposed that we would call it the Environmental Learning Center because it will be a place that people come to learn about the environment. That seemed to kind of capture the true intent of the building. We had some discussions with our administrative team about that. Dr. Hiltz felt it was important that we put that out there to you. That's kind of the history of how I came up with the Environmental Learning Center. But you know, it's really not a great idea for one person to name a district property. So we wanted you to have an opportunity to discuss that and tell us if you had other ideas and entertain what those might be.
I love it.
I like it too.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I mean, the Maney manner is close second. It's a close second, but I like this one.
And it's being on the foundation and I want you to recognize that there are people on the foundation that are spending hours and hours of their volunteer time looking for those big donors, finding, what is it, Jerry, when they give, they get students to tell their experience? What are they calling that?
Testimonials.
Yeah, they're collecting testimonials. And they've heard repeatedly that they really wanted it named for its purpose. And I just don't want to diminish what this committee is doing. And they're going to be in charge of raising for, what's the total cost, Jerry, around?
When you put all of the infrastructure together with the building itself, it'll exceed $4 million.
So it's an enormous project. And I think we should be very grateful to all this, all these people in the foundation that are spending hours getting these people out. Are they going to bring them out to the school forest for a meal like at lunchtime?
Starting in October, we're looking at in Fridays, bringing members of these organizations, these foundations out to sit down and have a meal with the kids at the school forest so that they can see what we have and what we're about. And then as the kids go out to recess and on to an afternoon activity, I'll be able to break away and spend a little bit of time with them answering questions and showing them the building that we're looking at replacing and picking their brains about what they think is appropriate for the new building and some of the things that we're going to need to purchase to go inside of it. And future programming uses for the community other than just the students during the school day. But you know, evening uses, weekend uses, corporate uses. Those are all things we want to get a lot of input on. So I think having them come out there when there's kids there, it kind of, you know,
And could you just wind up with the story that I think it was Hugh Curtis that shared with the foundation committee about his experience when he built Bannerman Hall? I think that's a great segue into what you're asking.
Sure. If you don't know Hugh Curtis, Hugh did my job many, many years ago. Did it for 33 and a half years in the Wassa School District and really built that thing from a piece of property to a nationally acclaimed environmental education program. And when they built the existing Bannerman Hall before that was there, Hugh had the idea to start inviting people from local businesses in Wassa out on Fridays for lunch with the kids. And at that time, they had a very limited amount of space. So lunch was cooked in the Red Lodge, the historic building that we're looking at replacing. And then it was served in the Red Lodge. And just the acoustics in that place, it gets really loud really quickly. And people would come in and sit down with the kids. And then he would say to them, we're not going to ask you for anything right now. But just know that in the future, we're looking at possibly expanding our buildings out here. And we'd like to be able to come back to you in the future with that. And he did that through the course of a school year. And then Dr. Nicholson, who was the superintendent, no, I'm sorry, Gil Bannerman, who was the superintendent at that time, said to Hugh to go ahead and see if he could raise the money. And I think the original story I got was about $84,000 is what it costs to build Bannerman Hall. And Hugh went out and talked to all those folks that had come out on Fridays. And a week later, went into the superintendent's office and dropped an envelope on the desk with $84,000 in it and said, let's build her. You know, so I listened to that story and thought, we're not talking $84,000 anymore. But if we can get enough people out there to see the value of that program and see those kids having a great experience, something that's really unique to our school district, who wouldn't want to be a part of that? And if they have the financial means to support that, I think we'll find very quickly in the upcoming weeks that they're going to be interested in doing that with us.
Hey Jerry, two questions. I assume, are we keeping, are you suggesting that we keep Wassa School District in front of the Environmental Learning Center?
Yeah, Pat, exactly. In my mind, when kids tell mom and dad they're going on a field trip, they're going to say, we're going to the school forest. We're going to the Wassa School Forest. So as I talk about this, I'll be talking about the Environmental Learning Center at the Wassa School Forest.
Okay.
It seems a little wordy for a sign or whatever to try to put the whole thing on it, but you know.
Yeah, well, and it just kind of goes back to the branding, which we were just talking about, right? Keeping that up there, I think is going to be important.
Absolutely.
The second question is, just out of curiosity, when or has there been a date determined that we're going to start kind of the kickoff to this, the official?
Fundraising or putting shovels in the ground?
Well, just educating the community, bigger than the potential donors, something, you know, hey, this is a project that we've now kicked off. And just keeping people updated on it. When is that slated to start?
Probably January is what's been, what's been talked about among the school foundation members and the administrative team. And the way they're looking at it is, it's going to be something that's done in phases. This upcoming few weeks is what's referred to as a quiet phase. They're looking for some large donors to give us a large sum of money over the course of three years. And they want to see where we sit after that initial phase ends. So if we're looking at a $4 million price tag for the whole thing and come the end of December, we already have $2.5 million spoken for, then we know what it is that we're looking for as we go into the next phase. That would be when we would have a kickoff and have a public engagement phase where now we're not looking for huge chunks of money. We're talking to hundreds of businesses and families and so forth that can make donations. And that would be in that phase starting in June.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, then I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education approval of changing the name from the Wassa School Forest Lodge to the Environmental Learning Center.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Maney.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, next on the agenda was Neola Policy Review. We don't have time, first of all. And second of all, Angie is not here tonight. So I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.